The recorder is on. Okay. With that, I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Town of Ledyard Plan and Zoning Commission is Thursday, September 10th, 2020. It is 7:02 PM. There's a lot of background noise. If your line isn't muted, please mute it. It is Thursday, September 10th, 2020. It is 7:02 PM. And we will call to order this meeting. So Commissioners, you'll need to unmute your lines to indicate your attendance. Mr. Kula?
Here.
Mr. Boudreaux? Mr. Boudreaux? Mr. Boudreaux, I think you're muted if you are here. I see a Tom Boudreaux in the list. Mr. Boudreaux, are you present? Mr. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Cherry?
Here. Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Driscoll? Last call. Mr. Boudreaux, are you present? I don't hear anything from Mr. Boudreaux, but I think that you're dialed in. If you are on voice, just let us know. We don't have any voting items initially, so if I need to seat an alternate later on, I will do so. There are no additions or changes to the agenda. Public hearings, we have no new applications this month. So moving on, oh, I apologize. Misses petitions. So this is a chance for any citizen to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about the ag regs, we'll handle that under the informal workshop section. So are there any comments from the public on anything else? Hearing none. Moving on, public hearings and new applications. There are no public hearings or new applications this evening. So under old business, we'll start the informal workshop on the ag tourism, agribusiness zoning regulations. So first, I just wanted to thank everyone's attendance and to everyone who provided written comments prior to the meeting. Those have been bundled up and distributed to all of the Commissioners. And for those of you who this is their first time here, I think you'll find that we are always looking for and are receptive to public input, so we're glad that you're here. I have a couple of notes to make, and then we'll get on to listening to your comments. So first, if you are interested in speaking tonight, I've asked that you write your name in the WebEx chat window. Our CEO, Kyle Felice, is going to write down those names as they appear. I call them in order, so I don't have to manage that. Once we go through that list, I'll call out to anyone else who wishes to make a comment that we missed or maybe on the phone. A note on our process. The regulation amendment that's being discussed is a draft document. In order to approve a regulation change or amendment, an application must go through a formal public hearing process. What was held in August was a pre-application workshop to gather information prior to making an application. Our typical workflow would be to amend the draft following that public workshop in order to make a formal application to start that process. However, given the amount of concern and confusion regarding the draft, I have not done that, so there is currently no application on the table. Additionally, no changes were made to the draft because I felt like making changes would have simply made a moving target and generated even more confusion. But I did want to leave the public workshop on the agenda as a means to gather comments and to allow the public to be heard. We'll gather oral comment tonight and combine that with the provided written comment and start discussing as a commission how to move forward in October and how to best coordinate with both the Ag Commission and the Economic Development Commission. If the Ag Commission has not been seated and met in October, we may delay that discussion another month. We'll just see how that goes. I also wanted to very briefly repeat the history of changes to the ag regs in town. And this goes back to at least 2009, when the Commission outsourced the original agricultural section of the POCD, which is the town's long-term planning document, which included statements about better defining agricultural uses and things that the town should do to support agriculture. In 2014, the backyard chicken regulation was allowed, to allow the keeping of poultry and rabbits on small lots with a zoning permit. Prior to that, livestock was only allowed on lots, less than three acres via a special permit process. In 2014 to 15, an ad hoc regulation rewrite committee discussed the insufficient agricultural regulations, particularly that the simple three-acre rule was a poor definition for a farm, but no significant changes were proposed at that time. In 2019, this Commission amended the Ledyard POCD, including the agricultural section, calling for the staffing of the agricultural commission and for increasing the scope of activities allowed on farms. Also in 2019, the Economic Development Commission approached land use with the desire to amend the regulations to allow large and small events on farms. We picked up this in April this year and over the summer, discussed proposals in this meeting resulting in the August draft. That was a subject to the workshop at our last meeting. I also wanted to note that we did post a very belated fact, and I apologize. I thought it had been posted to the meeting and it hadn't. But there is a fact that is now available on there that I think answers some of the most common questions that we saw in the written comments. So take a look if you'd like, and hopefully that'll answer some of those questions. And I wanted to note the goal of that was simply to answer common questions and not meant to be an argument for against any particular part of that draft. With that, I'll open up the floor for public comment. I'll ask again that people mute their lines whenever they are not talking, so we can get the best audio that we can. I'll remind all speakers, after they finish speaking, to mute their line. It seems to be the most common time people forget to do it. I'll ask Commissioners to limit questions to clarifying questions and ask speakers to state their name at the start of their comments to make sure we get the names correct and we know who's speaking. And also ask that speakers do their best to limit comments to approximately three minutes to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. With that, Kyle, has anyone signed on the chat to speak?
I'm trying to pull it up right now, Mr. Chairman. I don't believe I see anything unless I'm interpreting it wrong.
Okay, I don't see anything either, so I will simply go ahead and ask for any comments. So I see a first name, so Mr. Treaster. I see your name in there, if you would like to speak.
Good evening. Yes. For those of you who had the fortitude to read my 27 pages of comments, I give you an A+.
For the record, your name?
Eric Treaster.
Thank you.
The reason I'm watching tonight is, in my opinion, the... I don't think... I think that the entire... I don't think these regs are ready to be progressed. I think the appropriate way to approach it would be to actually start over. And the first step should be for the Commission to reach consensus on the purpose of the regs and the scope of the regs. And once the purpose, once there's consensus on the purpose and once there's consensus on the scope, then it would be a relatively easy issue to prepare a set of regulations that will achieve the scope and the purpose. That's my major concern. It's... The proposed regs regulate virtually everything, and I don't think there's a need to regulate virtually everything. I think the only real need is to regulate and constrain the parts of the commercial accessory use of farms. The hayrides, the apple picking by the public, the wine tastings, the... Parties, the weddings, commercial accessory uses of farm, I think should be reasonably regulated and by special permit. I don't think that can be done outright. And with reasonable regulations to regulate those commercial uses, just the same way we regulate any other commercial use. And... Because they will be subjective criteria, and with subjective criteria, that can only be done by special permit. So once the Commission reaches consensus on the purpose and the scope, then I think a draft set of regulations should be prepared that would regulate just the commercial accessory uses of farms, and everything else should be ignored. There's no reason to regulate manure pilings on a farm. We have not, nobody's complained about that problem that I'm aware of. And there's no reason to regulate how far the cows have to be set back from property lines. We've never had a real problem with the conduct of the farms. So that's my recommendation, is reach consensus on the purpose and the scope, and then go forward to implement regulations that will achieve that purpose and scope. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Treaster. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Do I see Mr... I apologize, I will not get your name right. Mr. Lansidell?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I've had a farm down on...
For the record, your name?
What? Oh, Curran Lansidell.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've ever been on this and set it up. I don't know much about how to use it.
But you can read just fine.
Do the best I can. Got a farm down at the end of Cool Art Road, which is off of Scottish Wharf. Been here since 1964, raising horses and doing other things with horses, lessons and boarding and all that. Prior to that, the farm was a dairy farm up and around 1900 or earlier. I don't think you want the history. There's something that I didn't know about these regulations, et cetera, except I got the little bulletin that the New York Daily puts out, comes out once a week, The Times, I guess. And so I went online here, and I read about the 100-foot setback they're talking about on your pasture. Now, it sort of looks like you're saying that if my pasture fence runs along a certain, say, a stone wall, I have to put my livestock fencing 100 feet from that onto my side. Is that what it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. I read the right-to-farm law that was written in 1981 and signed by the governor at that time, and it very clearly states that there's a 100-foot setback, but it's from the property line to the new residence. And that setback is supposed to be open space, natural plants, or if they have to put trees in or something like that. But that was to prevent new residences unless the farm is less than a year old. But to be 100 feet away, so there weren't complaints about noise, or dust, or smoke, or animals doing whatever they do. And so I... The regulation, as I read it, that's being proposed, is not proper. And in fact, there was a house, several houses built next to my pasture, right off of Colonel Ledyard Highway by Dine Bank, and they're probably 30, 40 feet from my property line or closer. And I complained about that up at the town hall, but I never heard anything back. But I feel that the regulation of requiring the farmer to move his pasture fencing in 100 feet is illegal and is improper. I don't have too much more to say, but I don't know how this works.
So no, the entire point is to give you the opportunity to speak your mind and to tell us what you think the problems there are. And so we appreciate that input. Is there anything else in particular you wanted to speak about?
It's in Section 4 of the back-to-farming or right-to-farm laws, and it very clearly covers things like dust and dirt, farm noises, animals, anything related with farming. The only time where the farmer would be at fault, if he negligently did something that caused problems for the homeowner. You know, did not, did something that was not in the normal course of farming.
Right, yeah. The right-to-farm law, which is a state law, protects farmers from nuisance lawsuits, from the five listed nuisances, so long as they are following best practices. And so, yeah, we're agreed on that. The only comment I'll make is, without saying that it is a good idea, the zoning commission would be within its rights to define a setback, so it's not illegal. That doesn't make it good policy.
Well, it's pretty much of a hardship for a farmer to have to move his smallest fences in 100 feet around his property. I mean, I have 94 acres, but it would still be a hardship and a lot of work. I'm 77 years old. I can't be doing that stuff.
Agreed. I understand. Yeah. Thank you for your... Is there anything else, Mr. Lansidell?
No, no, that's it. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you for joining and talking to us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cherry, if I could?
Yeah, let's keep it short, if you may.
Just that question. I see Joan Nichols is with us, and I appreciate Curran citing the Right to Farm Act. The buffer is not part of that. The lawsuits are, the nuisance claims are, but Joan may have more that she could say on that if we could ask her.
So Joan, if you're online, I'd actually prefer, if you would be willing to wait till the end, because there may be more comments that you can speak to. And so if you are willing to wait, I'd happily call on you at the end to make any final comments.
Yes, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Kyle, it looks like there's a few people lined up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have Melissa Holland.
Melissa, are you online?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
So Melissa Lamb-Holland, 97, Lambtown Road. My family's been farming since Ledyard was considered North Groton, so we've been there a very long time. I have quite a few concerns. I've actually personally reached out to the Connecticut Farm Bureau. I actually was part of the previous commission who helped write some of the plan before. I'll agree with Mr. Lansidell, if I'm saying that name correctly. I apologize. I don't have as many acres as he does, but most of my boundaries that keep in my, or our animals, is stone walls, and for us to have to go around and put a fence up, that's just a hardship and basically putting us out of business. And the fact that I think the town really needs to support farmers. I did not get through all 71 pages of that document. I am trying to get through that, but that just got posted last night, I believe. There was a lot of great comments in there. I think Mr. Treaster and Mr. Bill Thorne talked about how you guys have made it more against the policy, instead of allowing unless it's written. And my question is, if you guys become that strict, how agile are you guys to make those changes if someone comes to you? Is it months that they're waiting for a change like that? And we need to be able to respond and help people out, because we really want to keep farmers and small businesses, because looking at some of those letters, there's some amazing things that they're doing out there, and I really hate to squash that. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and I think certainly the agility to make changes is certainly an issue and something that we should continue to think about. Mr. Felice, is there other names?
Yes. Up next, we have Mr. Nembrowski.
Kevin, are you online?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kevin Nembrowski, for the record, also for the record note that I'm a member of the Ledyard Town Council and Chair of the Town Council Land Use Planning and Public Works Committee. Mr. Chairman, may I recommend, I'm sure that you've received, I haven't had a chance to look through all the comments that have been posted, but I also have to say I have not had a chance to actually look through the draft set of regulations that were put out yet. But might I recommend that the Commission, in a plan moving forward, because I have no real comments against anything that's been submitted yet, but if the plan is possible moving forward, is to, you know, gather all the information like you are today with this workshop and other written comments that you've received. And I would recommend that the Commission approach the Town Council about possibly setting up a ad hoc commission to... Made up of possibly members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, adding new stuff for people, for members of the Agricultural Committee who has not yet been named or appointed, but possibly actually work for them, to also possibly have some of those members be members of this ad hoc committee. So that between the Planning and Zoning, between the Agricultural Commission and possibly maybe some at-large persons as well, sit down, look at all the different state regulations, the state laws, the right to farming, the zoning requirements, look through, take into all the, gather all the information that's been, go review it, and then come back with a comprehensive set of regulations. That would be fair and equitable to the farmers, that we can move forward and support farming as we do, we state in our POCD. It's something that will work for the town and is in the best interest of the town and the farming community. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Nembrowski, and thank you for being here. And so, yeah, as I stated at the beginning, our current plan is tonight to just gather as much comment as we can. I think that, you know, there are probably other Commissioners as well that haven't had a chance to go through all the written comment. So in October, the Commission will start having that discussion about how best to move forward, and that's something that, you know, is also dependent upon when the Ag Commission is actually seated and staffed, because I think we want to, we'll need to figure out how to leverage that resource and to work with them. And so if they're not seated by our October meeting, we will probably delay competition.
I'm not sure when they're going to be seated. I know Admin had met last night to go through the members who had the, I think it was like 12 people who had applied, but I have not seen the result of how that came out of Admin yet, and I believe, I'm hoping that that, those approvals for those members who will be appointed will be on the next Town Council agenda.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Felice, who's next?
Up next, we have Pam Ball.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So my name is Pam Ball. I live on Shoeville Road, and just as a point of clarity, I'm the current manager of the Ledyard Farmers Market. I have two quick comments. The very interesting thing that I'm hearing from vegetable vendors at the Ledyard Farmers Market is people walking by saying, "I've got that in my garden. I've got that in my garden. Oh, I don't need to buy tomatoes. I've got that in my garden." So I think that's a wonderful testament to how the town of Ledyard functions, not only at the level of people that consider themselves farmers, but as people who just simply have a little bit of land in the backyard. And to follow up on that comment, I think the thing that I would like to see in these guidelines is to allow people to be self-sufficient, to be able to grow what they need to grow in terms of plants, but also in terms of livestock, which brings me to the question of roosters, that if somebody wants to have some chickens, they should be able to continue to have chickens by having a rooster and having the animal husbandry going on on their property that they need to, to be at least sustainable. If they want to sell it, that's a different issue, but I don't, I think that people with whatever is determined to be the proper amount of land should be able to sustain themselves on their piece of land. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So roosters are a highly contentious thing in zoning law. And so I think the larger discussion of what livestock should be allowed under home husbandry is one that the Commission will have to decide if that's something worth expanding. So I appreciate your comments. Mr. Felice, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I thought I had in the chat, besides Joan Nichols from the CT Farm Bureau.
Okay, before we get to Ms. Nichols, is there anyone on the phone or anyone else who would like to speak? You are likely muted, so you'll need to unmute if you'd like to speak.
Yes, I would like to speak.
Hi, who's speaking?
I'll go after whoever's going next.
No, please.
Deb Schwell. Is there someone before me?
No, please speak up.
Okay. My name is Deb Schwell. I live on Center Groton Road, near Chriswood Trace. We bought our property 35 years ago with the intention of having a mini farm. We have four and three-quarters acres. We are not farming at the present, and due to my age, probably we never will. But I am concerned, because when we bought the land, the zoning requirements were very simple for farming. Anything over three acres, you could have a farm. And I find that the regulations are going to be very restricting and limiting, and it bothers me that it's, that down the road, if my grandchildren wanted to farm or if we wanted to sell of the land, that it wouldn't be as desirable as it was when we bought it. One of the attractions of moving to Ledyard was that in 1978, the zoning regulations were very unencumbered and very non-micromanaging, and that was a big, big attraction, because in other towns, you have zoning regulations that nickel and dime you to death, and in Ledyard, it felt like you could breathe free. And I'm afraid that with all these new proposals... Change. The other comment I have is that due to the COVID-19, we can't meet at a town meeting, and it's hard for people to access this kind of process remotely via the internet that we have. And because these regulations are going to be so far-reaching and so intensely impacting on so many people, I don't think that anything should be decided until it's safe to meet in person at a town hall meeting, and people can discuss this in person. It's a kind of, in a position against our democracy to make any final decisions before the end of COVID-19. I mean, you can have discussions, but the decisions should be delayed. It'd be fair to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Schwell. One of the things that the Land Use Department has discussed is whether it makes the most sense to delay this until we can't have in-person meetings. So we understand your comment. I think it's a completely fair comment. Is there anyone else who would just to speak?
Go ahead.
I have something to say if you have a moment.
Please, who's speaking?
This is Laura Kelly. Can you hear me, Nate?
I just heard you that time, yes. People mute their lines if you are not Laura Kelly.
So my name is Laura Kelly. I am actually the former market manager for the Farmers Market. I resigned last year. The interest that I have in this, beyond the precedent that this is setting for neighboring communities and elsewhere, when we came here three years ago, we were actually in a historic farmhouse that was a dairy farm up until about 1919. And when we got here, it had been filled with drug dealers, and the police have been in and out of this property for years and years and years. And we were able to take a house that everybody was hoping would be condemned, and we have turned it around into a functioning homestead. Based on the proposed, now hopefully dead, proposal, our property is only 4.92 acres, and we wouldn't be able to do 90% of what we do here because of that 0.8 acres. And one of my fears, my husband, he retires from the Navy next year, and we go home, we're heading back down south, the next... The next people that come into this house, if we have such strict guidelines on what they can do, this house is going to go right back where it was. You're not going to find somebody willing to put the sweat equity into a property like this unless they can do what they want to do. We back up to the Mashin Tucket Reservation. There is nobody behind me, and yet that 100-foot setback would eliminate almost two-thirds of my property based off of the way that we are laid out. So these are, these blanket regulations, I think that they really need to be looked at on a more case-by-case basis. And you need to see the larger scope of what this is affecting. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Felice, has anyone else entered on the chat that I've missed?
Mr. Chairman, that's all I have in the chat so far.
Last call before we turn it over to Ms. Nichols?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we just got two more people in the chat as we said that.
Okay, great.
First, we have Rachel from the Watchers Farm.
Rachel? I can't hear you, Rachel, if you're speaking. I still can't hear you, Rachel.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Wonderful. And actually, we've got two backups going to get them open. So my name's Rachel Waters. I'm on Center Groton Road. Our farm has been like a registered farm for years. But before that, for two more generations, we've been using our land, which is over 50 acres, for our own use. And as a, we call it a homestead, but in Leadyard regular as a farm. And I think that should be considered valid, being self-sufficient, not just a commercial farm, as in the regulations. So being able to use the lands that we have for our own desires and needs is important. And it's not, I'm not just concerned with our own farm, with our own space, but for anyone coming into Leadyard or trying to be a part of the town, a farm can exist on a quarter acre of land. You can grow mushrooms in the building and have a living off of mushrooms. You can grow sprouts on a quarter acre of land and eat the living off of that. So I think tonight we have over 40 participants, many of whom are farmers. There's a huge opportunity to hear from experienced people who know what it takes to farm. What, you know, keeping chickens going does require a rooster. You can't just fertilize things. And so I think this opportunity should be utilized by the zoning community if we can. And that's it at that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Mr. Felice, do we have someone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Next, we have Steve Mardick.
Steve, can you, are you online?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Okay, for the record, my name's Steve Mardick. I live at 59 R-2 Long Pond Road South. I don't really have any comments per se, but I have spoke to many, many concerned residents about this issue. And the main question that seems to come up over and over again is simply why. I think that is something that needs to be answered in a timely manner moving forward. Nobody seems to know why any of this is coming up now in April 2020. And like I said, moving forward, that's an answer that should be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Mardick. So I gave a brief history at the beginning of where this comes from. And, you know, the intent of the regulations is to allow a wide variety of currently unpermitted non-agricultural accessory uses on lots with legitimate agricultural uses. And that is the intent. We currently have some of these uses ongoing in town. No enforcement has occurred because there is the expectation that the regulations will be updated to allow them. We still have to do that. The, I think the thing that we have certainly heard is that a less comprehensive regulation is what's desired. And that's something, that's input that we'll take on board and process and keep moving forward. So thank you for your comments, Mr. Mardick. Kyle, do we have other people?
Mr. Chairman, Steve was the last one in the chat.
Okay, I'll open it up. Is there anyone else online who wishes to speak?
What are you doing? Do you click on yourself?
I heard someone say, "Do you click on yourself?" So is that, I thought it sounds like someone who's trying to speak.
Yeah, that's us, Steve. I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
So my wife and I are trying to start an alpaca farm. We have been members in the community for 17 years. And we are experiencing great difficulty in trying to make that happen.
In the town of Leadyard.
Right. So with that being said, we've, we've come against some, some properties that we've actually gone down to the town hall, inquired about them, and we're told that it would be unsuitable for us to be able to start our alpaca farm with the regulations that are, that are up and coming. So what I'd also like to do is find out from you folks, you know, land restrictions, so on and so forth. We can bring down proposals because North Stonington has actually changed their regulations for alpaca farming. And they are more accommodating right now than the town of Leadyard.
And so is Lebanon.
And so is Lebanon, absolutely. So with that also being said, we are, we want to stay in this community. We established ourselves and we're Sea Coast Alpaca. So I don't know if you've seen us at the farmers markets or anything like that, but, you know, we've been at Home Birds, farmers markets, Holdrages, and, you know, we firmly believe in this town. And we love this town because of its proximity. And my wife helps take care of an elderly aunt who's 93 years old. And, you know, for us to move further away would be not smart on our part. But, you know, I would just really, really like to emphasize that we've been trying for probably four years to find a place here in Leadyard that would accommodate the regulations that we were told and read that three acres was what we needed. And every time we went down to town hall, you know, we're pretty much deterred. So.
If I can just add to that a little bit.
Just for the record, would you, would you mind just giving your names for the record?
Yes, I'm Suzanne Cullen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nate. The thing that I would like to add is just a little information about alpacas. And I feel that according to some regulations, they are grouped in with the needs of horses, cattle, and sheep. Alpacas are very light on the land. Alpacas are not heavy grazers. Alpacas are very clean. And I did write a letter to the mayor and to the land use. And the thing I want to explain about alpacas, according to the New England Alpaca Association, is you can have about six alpacas on one acre of land, and that is suitable for them. So we are in a situation where we don't necessarily need three to five acres. We would like the opportunity to share information and to educate about the needs of alpacas so that we possibly have the opportunity to stay in this area. We are comfortable here. We both work in Groton. As my husband mentioned, I help my elderly aunt who was in Groton. I can't be 35 minutes or an hour away from her. And we've become a part of this community. We enjoy the community as well. So our thing is, we would like to see different livestock have different requirements that are appropriate for that particular livestock. We have seen listings for properties these last few months that have been just under four acres or just under two acres. And the design of the land would have worked just fine for the needs of alpacas. So that's the point that we would like to get across as well tonight. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming to talk. And absolutely, if you have specific documentation, you know, about alpacas or something like that, absolutely. Send it to the land office and you send it to landuseassistant@leadyard.com or .org. And Kyle, would you mind putting that email address in the chat so that everyone can see it? So if you've got documentation like that, send it along to there and it gets distributed to all commissioners. And that's sort of the best way to make sure the commission gets any information that you want to provide.
All right, thank you. And we've met Kyle. He knows who we are.
Great, even better. So yeah, so then just call Kyle and tell him what you've got for him, and he can also send it around.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, in the chat, we have Jacob from the Watchers Farm.
Jacob, are you online?
Hi, Nate.
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay, this is Jacob Waters from the 1695 Center Groton Road. I was reviewing some of the previous meetings that you guys had, and it seemed like, or as you've mentioned before, that the main reason for redoing the regulations for farms was mostly to make certain events and activities. I don't know if there's necessarily a reason to redo all of the regulations for Ag. Maybe you could have just inserted in the necessary items for the activities and events and things that are missing. I believe Mr. Treaster had made some comments a couple of meetings ago regarding that.
Thank you for those comments around Scope. I appreciate that. Does anyone else wish to make a comment? I hear no one. I don't see anyone in the chat. So with that, Ms. Nichols, if you are still online.
I am. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. For the record, my name is Joan Nichols. I'm the Executive Director for Connecticut Farm Bureau Association. We are based in Weathersfield, Connecticut. I actually live in Franklin myself. And we represent over 2,000 farmers and farm families in the state of Connecticut. We just celebrated 100 years in Connecticut. And we have a longstanding history of helping advocate for agriculture, both on the state level, but in the 12 years that I've been with Connecticut Farm Bureau, I've spent an exorbitant amount of time really helping local communities with the issues that you're discussing this evening. Because as we all know, in Connecticut, so much of what happens with land use happens locally. So with that, I'd just like to ever so briefly touch on the details of the regulations. But I think I would more so also like to provide what Connecticut Farm Bureau could offer to the town of Leadyard in assistance. And also like to talk just a little bit about the process that other towns have used, which we have seen, as have the farmers in those towns, to really be successful and an efficient use of everybody's time. So on the details of the regulations, I'll just mirror almost all of the other comments that you've heard from the farmers in town. The 100-foot setback on the fencing is really concerning. It causes a number of problems. First of all, the first thing it does is it takes land out of agricultural production. So a farmer could have that land assessed as farmland, but you're taking that land away from the use of that land for livestock and pasture production. The other problem that causes is once you start moving fence lines around, all of a sudden, the fence line becomes the boundary. And down the road, that causes a lot of problems. And then we all know the problem we have with invasive plant problems. So once you start setting fencing away from the boundary lines of the stone walls, now that's 100 feet that guess what's going to grow up there, multi-floor rows and autumn olive and all of the other uglies. So it causes a maintenance problem. So on many levels, that's problematic. And I'll just leave it at that. The, all of the animal husbandry components to the proposed regs, I think are worth revisiting. And I'll just mention that Connecticut Farm Bureau just finished a partnership with Connecticut RC&amp;D. And we just literally updated the guide for municipalities on the regulation for livestock. That is a new publication. It's available online. I'm also happy to mail copies to the commission in Leadyard so you have those available. And that provides you guidance on what to consider with livestock. But for the most part, the care and animal husbandry lies with the farmer. And then the Department of Agriculture is really the go-to agency on what's considered generally accepted agricultural practices. So I'll just leave that at that. I would also like to speak a little bit to the process. So in the 12 years that I've been working with Connecticut Farm Bureau, I've worked with literally dozens of towns in the state. And what we have found to be the best process, and it mirrors what Mr. Nemrofsky said earlier, is if you form some sort of a committee, an ag committee, that is charged with working with these regulations, you get the input of the farming community, and then you gather all that information. I am more than happy from Connecticut Farm Bureau to help participate in that. I have literally documents that summarize all of the ag regulations that have currently been adopted in Connecticut by town. I have them for farm stands. I have them for wineries. And I want to talk a little bit about agritourism. But you don't have to reinvent the wheel. These are all regulations that have been adopted by towns in Connecticut in the past 10 years. So they're current. I'm happy to share that information with you, and you can look at what other towns have done and find a good fit for Leadyard. The other thing I would just like to mention is that I think the vast majority of the animal husbandry and all of that, it sounds to me like maybe is not necessary, or maybe there's a different way to address that. If really the issue is the agritourism and the additional activities that are not really tied to agricultural production that are something that maybe the town does feel needs a permitting process, many, many towns have done this. And I just spent two years educating towns on developing regulations for agritourism. We partnered with Farm Credit East. And I've got a wealth of information on that. And, and we, if that's something you're really looking to do, be more than happy to help you. And if that's really the focus of where you think you need to be, you could focus on the agritourism and these events and everything else that does draw a large crowd to farms and can be something that could be problematic. But a good set of regulations helps the town manage that. And many towns have done this already. So I'd be happy to share that information with you. And there are, as is mentioned earlier, a myriad of state laws that also address this. There's state statutes on fencing. There's state statutes on poultry. There is the state right to farm law that addresses the nuisances and gives authority to the Commissioner of Agriculture. So there's a lot on state statutes that should also be looked at that may not necessarily have to be reinvented on the local level. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions or just thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
No, thank you. Thank you for participating. You're always welcome here. So I'm glad you're back again. It's great. I will certainly take you up on your offer of the comprehensive list of regulations. You know, we gathered all of the agricultural regulations from, you know, the surrounding towns. But, you know, that's still a southeastern Connecticut view. And so, you know, there may be something interesting from other parts of the state. So I will absolutely take you up on that offer. If that's a document you can forward on to us, we would appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely. And if you get to the point where you want to, you know, sort of put a hold on this and reinvent the process, so to speak, I'd be more than happy to participate, virtual meetings, in-person meetings. meetings, in-person meetings, it doesn't matter. And I will just tell you, I was invited to participate in this by members of Connecticut Farm Bureau who are also farmers in your community. So I don't go looking to push my nose into something where we're not welcomed, although we hope we provide good guidance to towns, but we had farmers that had contacted me that were concerned and we're just here to provide help and guidance and grow agriculture in Connecticut.
Yeah, absolutely. Your resource we've used before and we will absolutely use you again. And so we will possibly hold you to your word when we make decisions about how we're moving forward to contact you and include you. We appreciate it.
Okay, I welcome that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the time.
Last call for any other comments from anyone online? Okay, hearing none, we'll end the informal workshop on the proposed agritourism ag business regulations. Again, in case anyone missed the, my introduction, there is, we, there is no application on the table, right? So the, I've asked the commission to take on board all of the comment that we've received tonight, as well as all of the written comment that we've received over the last couple of weeks. And in October, the commission will discuss what we think the best path forward is and certainly I think Mr. Dombrowski's proposal is one that we'll discuss and we'll figure out how to move forward from there. So I think that's all the comments I've got on that. So next up, I will move and so I won't be discussing this regulation any further. If people want to leave, by all means do. Also, please stay around and I'll ask everyone, you know, thank everyone again for participating and ask you to stay involved as we move forward.
Chairman Wood, Commissioner Cherry, does the system capture all the participants before everybody leaves, even the non-speakers?
I believe we have that information. We will extract as much as we possibly can and we also have the list of emails from everyone who submitted written comment.
Just thinking, I'm thinking we would want to build a notification list of those that have shown interest to put them on an email list so we can make sure they're notified because I know some people find out at the last minute. Curran pointed that out, he found out because Amanda wrote a wonderful article with some help from Allison, so.
Yep, and I'll say that anyone who is online who wants to make sure that they stay informed, Mr. Felice, once again copied the email address. So if you want to stay in touch and you're worried that you won't be included, you can send an email to land, L-A-N-D dot use, U-S-E dot assistant, A-S-S-T at leadyardct.org. So by all means, send an email to there and ask to be included in any further discussions. And I know many of you volunteered to be on the ag commission and I thank all of you who were willing to do that. I'm always heartened when people volunteer to, you know, invest their time in something like this, so I appreciate it. Okay, next up is a discussion of planning and zoning land use fees. Deb, can you pull up the proposal, the modifications to ordinance 300 dash 008?
I'm gonna try, I've got a different screen right now. Let's see.
So while you try to do that, I can give the introduction in this. The commission will remember that, I think probably two months ago, the town council had asked for a periodic review of the land use fee schedules and this is something that we do every couple of years to review these. This is primarily the domain of the Land Use Department, but they asked for the Planning and Zoning Commission's feedback on this. We provided a number of fee, a number of suggested changes to the fee schedule, the ordinance in general. And before this went to the town council for vote, the land use office prepared a modification that shows most of the changes that we requested. So there was a few rewording changes under the accessory structures. We asked for the removal of the home offices fee because that didn't make any sense. We got rid of the separate line for the modification of approved site plan applications to include that under regular site plan applications. Most notably, we thought that the fee per lot in the subdivisions was very excessive. And so the town planner and CEO prepared a modified schedule for the subdivision costs and this is roughly in line with what IWWC said as well. And so we're a little bit more aligned with how their fee schedule works as well, with a base fee for the first three lots and then the lots after that are at a significantly lower cost than they were. Ms. Burdick, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Any further comments beyond what we already introduced here?
No, the only comment I would have is the new, the subdivision fees that are now proposed would be $250 up to three lots. And then there are additional fees per lot. So three to 10 lots would be an additional $50 per lot, 10 to 20 would be 75 and 20 plus would be an additional $100 per lot. The reason I put those figures in there is because your current regulations go, the fee per lot went up by the number of lots. So that's why I changed it to that. Certainly you could, wetlands went with 250 per lot, up to three lots and $50 per lot after that. So it may make sense to do a just blanket plus per lot after, but you know, you also have to realize that, you know, a 20-lot subdivision is a big review. So that's all I have to say there.
Yeah, certainly the demands, both from the town engineer and the town planner for, you know, 20, 30 subdivision lots is pretty substantial. And so I think we recognize the manpower required there. Questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I will make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves of the suggested modifications to town ordinance 300 dash 008 and the planning and zoning land use fee schedules. If I can have a second?
Second, Commissioner Cherry.
Any further discussion here? I mean, I think that, you know, certainly the change that we made here got rid of the starting the most onerous changes and fundamentally, I think that, you know, it's really the Land Uses Department to understand what the fees need to be in order to cover the work they've got to do for these. Any other discussion from commissioners?
Commissioner Cherry, just real quick, I had thought our fees for subdivisions were inverted and thought that as you had more, you reached an economy of scale and you could charge less per lot. I've since revised that based on input from staff on the extra needs as you increase the number of lots. So even, even though it's obviously costs more, it costs more than the per fee, per lot fee we would charge for five lots to do 30. So I agree with what's proposed.
Other commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to make a final check. Mr. Boudreau, are you online and can we hear you? Okay, we're not hearing from Mr. Boudreau. So Ms. Scanlon, can I seat you for this vote?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So I will go ahead and call the vote on approval of the land use fee schedules. Mr. Kula?
Yes.
Mr. Foot?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
And then there's a yes vote, so the motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Next up, we have approval of minutes. We have minutes from our meeting of August 13th, 2020. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes from the August 13th meeting. Commissioner Cherry.
Commissioner Wood, seconds.
Okay, it's a motion by Mr. Cherry and a second by Mr. Wood. Any comments or corrections from commissioners? Hearing none, I will call the votes. Mr. Kula?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so we approved the minutes from August 13th, 2020. For reports, Ms. Burdick, do you have a town planner report? If not, I have two questions that I would like you to speak to.
Why don't you go ahead with your questions first?
So first off, I just wanted, if you could give the commission an update on the Lotsip grant.
So the Lotsip grant, we have put out an RFP for a firm to complete our application and it would also include if we have a contract for funding from DOT Construction Services and whatnot. The deadline for submittal is September 30th. After that, we'll be going, you know, full board with submittal to the COG. The RFP has been placed on the town website, it's going to be advertised in the day, it's on the COG website and I've sent it to three known firms in the area that have asked me for it. So that's where we are with Lotsip.
Great, and the STEEP grant, I believe, was submitted as well, correct?
Correct, we got it, we got it done, you know, in that month. I submitted it, I worked with the State of Connecticut, the office, and there are a few things we had to switch around, but we got it in by the deadline and from what I understand, they were supposed to have heard, they were supposed to have acted around September 14th.
Okay.
But because, but because the deadline was pushed off until the 28th, I'm assuming we're going to hear towards the end.
Okay, yeah, that was my follow-up question was if they had given an updated date when we expected to hear about the awards. And so last final comment, I saw that the executive orders regarding outdoor dining and these things. Okay, and so I saw the executive orders on outdoor dining and those kind of things have all been extended. How many uses of that do we, have we had in town?
I think we're looking for Kyle with the number permit.
Sorry, you just cut in there and all I heard was.
I think that would be a question for Kyle since he did the applications.
Great, I will ask him that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here, Ms. Chairman. I don't have the figure in front of me, I apologize, I'm on my personal computer. It was only half a dozen or so, if that. You know, I've been driving by, keeping an eye on them, nothing's expanded past what was a permitted. Talking to some of the other local restaurants, they didn't want to apply at all, they're still doing just takeout only kind of stuff, so I don't see an issue with that right now.
Yep. Yeah, no, I was happy to see that, you know, as many places did take advantage of it as they did, so. Yeah, Ms. Burdick, anything else?
No, just we're, I have learned from the Realtor for the new owner of the Leadyard Center School that they have nine tenants lined up, so I'm happy to see that of all different varieties. You know, I don't have any permits yet, applications for them, so I can't really tell you what they are, but the, we're meeting on-site Monday with the owners to try to make sure we have all issues addressed so that we can get these people open.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see as many tenants signing up as quickly for that location, that's great.
Yeah, yes, I'm thrilled about it.
Yep. Mr. Felice?
The only, the only other.
Please, Ms. Burdick, continue.
Oh, I'm sorry, the only other one, thing I wanted to update you on was, we still haven't heard from the Department of, with regards to the Leadyard Senior Housing Grant that we wrote. We did have a meeting with DOH, with CHFA, with the Housing Authority, with our consultant, with the mayor and myself. Basically, it was a, why should we give you this money, meeting and that was about a month ago, but we still haven't heard anything back, so I'm still crossing my fingers on that project because it's really, really needed and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Mr. Felice?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I apologize if our report was uploaded late this afternoon, it was, it's been a, it's been a crazy week, let's put it that way. Another busy month with permits, I think we had six new single families, some of those were approved, some are still in review. Trying to follow up on old complaints still, I had a couple roosters again this month. I was listening in the comments earlier and, you know, I just kind of bothered me some of those comments, but we had an unpermitted shed a resident complained about, they applied for a permit, so we're addressing that. Other than that, it's been busy. We're working with the Leadyard Center School project, like Liz said. We also met with Gold Star Homes this week, just discussing Stone Gate and what needs to move forward initially. So we discussed the RV parking area that's going to move forward. Short-term rentals, I've been talking with two other residents, they haven't applied yet, but I forwarded them all the documentation, so hopefully we should get that soon. And the last one I got, I'm just waiting on a water test, everything else should check out on that. Aside from that, just working with residents, you know, doing permits, questions and stuff like that.
Yeah, so you beat me to one of my questions, which was, you know, how the STR ordinance was going. I know it's, I know it's not zoning, but you're the enforcement guy for it. So, yeah, I mean, have you gotten feedback from people who are filling out the permits on, you know, how it is working out in practice for them?
I haven't had any feedback, but I will say I did receive one complaint from a neighbor concerning parking on the street. So, you know, I addressed that with the owner of the STR, I haven't heard any additional complaints, but we're certainly addressing those, I'm trying to keep an eye on them best we can. A lot of these are located off the road, so I don't think it's an issue with parking with most of them, but some of them along Long Pond, you know, there's not much parking, so we're trying to monitor that.
Was that complaint for a permitted short-term rental or an unpermitted short-term rental?
It was a permitted one. They were approved for two parking spaces, they had additional cars in the road over the weekend, so that's where the complaint came from.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair enough. The last thing I had was, I know we have put you in a bit of a bind, known violations on properties that are agricultural uses and asking you to stay any enforcement. And so I wanted to offer to make that official policy. We can make a motion to make that official policy for the zoning official to stay any enforcement there. But would that be helpful for you?
No, yeah, I agree that would be helpful, you know, just cover the land use department in general. Obviously, the residents. Obviously, the residents are concerned with that. So that'd be a good idea, I would think, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to direct the zoning official that notices of violations may be issued to property owners conducting unpermitted activities on properties with established agricultural uses, but that enforcement shall at least stay for a period of six months or until such time as the commission, after interaction with the Leder Agricultural Commission and/or residents or members of the public has adopted revised zoning regulations regarding agriculture.
Commissioner Cherry, I'll second that.
Thanks. And so all this is doing is it is giving the zoning official permission to stay any enforcement actions on any, any complaints that he does receive on these activities. And so the other thing that we have asked him to do is it lets him draft notices of violations so that we can get a listing of, look, these are the activities that we know are going on that we want to figure out how to permit but are currently unpermitted. And so hopefully that will sort of help clarify some of the issues and help focus any future regulation drafting to actual issues. Any other comments from commissioners?
If I could, Commissioner Cherry?
Please.
I, I think it's important that we, we write a notice of violation for those things we know that are wrong and that we mentioned the regs are being rewritten and we appreciate their input and assistance when the group is formed to rewrite those regs that I think we would be remiss if we didn't let everybody know who is in violations, they're in violation and we hope to fix it.
Agreed. Other comments from commissioners?
So we have a few people, this is Commissioner Scanlon.
Yep.
So we, we know of a few people in violation of current regs and there's a lot of small farms operating. How do we reach out?
So the notice of violation would be for known violate, known current zoning violations that we have. The Z E O will draft a notice of violation that says that it is a known violation, but enforcement is state and because of a regulation update and will ask for their input and that will be mailed to the property owner.
So then they could take that to the ag commission and work with them on how they might create the new regs that would allow them to operate that portion of their business or farm.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission, yes?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yep.
Commissioner Cherry, once again, please.
Mr. Cherry?
I, personal opinion, I'm not the enforcement officer, so it doesn't really fill a bucket with anything, but I think agricultural uses, where our regulations today are very broad. We say if you meet 11Q of the state's general statutes for agriculture, that's an agricultural use. So the things we're talking about are are commercial, non agricultural uses that fall outside that definition. And, and so most of our small farmers are fine. They're not, they're, they're doing agriculture. You know, they're, they're, they've got livestock, they're boarding horses, they're, they're doing agriculture. So I, I think it's the events outside of that which brought us to try and fix the regs that, that we need to identify.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. That, that is dead on. The only, I think the only known violations that the Land Use Department is aware of are commercial activities on agricultural uses. So I think it's a good clarification. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Mr. Kula? Mr. Kula?
Sorry, I stepped away for a second. My vote is yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Ms. Scanlon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the motion passes five oh. Okay, anything else for Mr. Felice on the zoning official reports?
Mr. Cherry again?
Yep.
I sat in on land use plan, public works meeting this week and listened to a lot of the discussion on the Tri-Town Trail. I think that's another case where best intentions aside, we may be operating outside the permits that have been issued and I'd like the zoning and wetlands enforcement officer just to go verify that and see if we can help them get back on track. And, and, you know, that may be as simple as, you know, go look, write a notice of violation saying, come sit down and talk to us. But there was a lot of discussion that sounded, there wasn't any clear conclusion on we're in accordance with our permits or we're not in accordance with our permits. And I think that needs to be resolved to protect the Tri-Town Trail Association, the Town of Leder and the Land Use Office.
Yep, I think that makes sense. It is an interesting discussion where there is some confusion on what is actually permitted there. So I think that'd be a good thing for the well unofficial follow up on. Anything else for Mr. Felice? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kula? Mr. Kula, I think you're muted. Yeah, Mr. Kula, you're still muted.
Okay.
Great, thank you. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say a few words about the the ag regulations, zoning regulations that we've been embroiled with. You and I spoke yesterday and I'd like to just share with the commission, some of the things that I had on my mind that I, that I think are important to, to to help us move ahead with this. And what, what I, what I think is that we have like about a three part process. The first part, we can do.
But if I interrupt you for one second, are you willing to have this discussion in October? And the only reason I say that is because earlier in the meeting, I said we'd have that discussion in October. And I know we have about half the participants logged in that we did at that point. And so I, I don't want to have a discussion after a whole bunch of people have left. You know, if you're willing to hold your comments to October, I would very much appreciate it because I want your comments. But I want to make sure we do it in a way that everyone can hear them.
I think as long as the commissioners are still present, I'm satisfied that, that's all I, that's all I intend to talk to. I, I will spend only about three minutes. If, if, if it's okay with you.
It's okay. Are you willing to write down your comments so that we can attach them to the record as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
But before we get to that point, like I said, I think it's a, it's a three part process from this point forward. Part has been alluded to tonight. Mr. Treister made a comment about we should sit down and, and, you know, organize our objectives and our purpose. And, and I look at that and I, and I, and I know that when people ask you, Mr. Chairman, why are we doing this? You tell them you have the answer. You know what it is. I think that if the words were better in that, in that draft regulation, that purpose would, would stand out. We, you know, everybody would be able to see what, what that is. And I, and I look at some of the specific questions that, that people have sent in, like they're, they're asking, why are some regulations deleted? Why are the regs changing? And basic questions like what is, you know, zoning permits, site plan review and approval, special permits? In other words, things that are standard operating procedure, but now are wrapped into agriculture and it looks to a lot of people like we're, we're imposing things like special permits on agriculture that were, that were not there before. Those, those special permits were always in the regs for other things. And my point is that I think right now we could, we could take a good swipe at organizing the, and what I'm saying, take a good swipe, I mean, do some editorial work on the stuff that you wrote down and that's there and it would be, it would really shine. It would really be good. And that would get us ready for a point after when the, you know, the ag commission is seated. Which I think of as step two is to take that to them and then get all their, their input on the technical things like, like setbacks and all these things that that Joe Nichols was talking about. And that maybe Joe Nichols could help with, but until you get a, a, a really good edited document to work with, that I, I think, I think you're wasting your time. You know, in other words, I think we've done we've done a lot of stuff that an ad hoc committee would, would do. We've already done it. It's already been done. We have comments from dozens of people, literally. And that to me is good enough. I think we're ready to go ahead and, and fix the regs. I would, I would volunteer to do that if I had help maybe from one other commissioner. That's all I would do. And the third part of that process would, would be the normal process. You know, you'd have a normal planning and zoning, public hearing. And then a vote, a discussion, a vote by the commission. And that's the three parts. And it, it to me is maybe it's obvious to me, I don't know. Like a lot of things, Chairman Woody, obvious to you that you've written down and other people look at it and they say, I don't get it. Well, you know, I think, I think we have to do that as our next step. Anyway, that's what I, that's what I wanted to get off my chest.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kula. I appreciate it and I look forward to continuing that discussion in October. With that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone who stuck around till the end of the meeting. I hope that we see some of you again in the future, even when we're not talking about ag regs. So with that, I will adjourn this regular meeting of the Leder Planning and Zoning Commission at eight twenty three P M on Thursday, September 2020. Thank you very much.
Thank you.